Okay, alright.
Now, now we have to behave.
Yeah, now we have to behave. I'll call the June sixth planning commission meeting to order. And the first order of business is the pledge of allegiance. Allegiance? Sorry, I thought, I thought the table was going to come back in.
Oh, don't worry.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Isn't the most stable thing?
Yeah, I'll look at that after the meeting.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, no.
No, you won't, just tell Bobby.
Assign it, assign it to someone else.
It's missing a wheel. There you go.
Oh, look. Well, thank you.
Right, continuing on.
Yes. Your other duties as assigned have stopped. Um, okay, then, um, we have the, um, adopt the agenda. Is there anything else that we needed to add to this? Keep looking for people, okay, then I'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
I make a motion to adopt the agenda, agenda as it says.
One second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Then we have approval of the planning commission meeting minutes from April, um, fourth. I, I just had, um, one thing on, on, it says page two.
Okay.
Oh, that's because I had it on the backside, okay. Um, we're, let's see, in the second paragraph down towards the bottom, you're talking about existing parking spaces. And then, um, cultists noted that there are seventy-three existing parking spaces.
Yep.
Okay?
Yeah.
Which is more than adequate to accommodate one, is it space?
Yep, one space, yep.
Okay. That just made more sense. Unless employees are going to be laying down in the parking lot too.
Yeah.
I'm not quite sure why.
Yep, that's right, there you go.
And then, okay, that was all that I had. If there was anything else from anybody? Okay, then I would need a motion to adopt as amended the April fourth minutes.
Motion to adopt the April fourth minutes as.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So then, we come to the new business. And, um, since, um, well, since we don't have anybody here, can we open and close the public meeting and then just go into it?
Yes.
Yep. Okay, so, um, I'll open and close the meeting since there's no one present at six oh eight?
Yep.
Or something?
Yep.
Six oh eight, perfect. So, so we have this wonderful thing that we keep doing, even though it says that it's a thirty-year plan. So we do it every ten years.
Yep.
Mm-hmm. Um, so, Mark.
Yeah, so, uh, honorable chair commissioners, um, this is back in front of you tonight with, um, honestly, not many changes from the last time the plan was presented. Um, we sent it out to surrounding communities, we got back comments primarily from the water.
Districts.
Districts. Um, Mindot has, uh, told us they still are trying to provide us comments, but I haven't seen those yet. Um, we have shown them the plan on many different occasions, but there's kind of the people who do day-to-day planning, the people who do long-range planning are not the same people. Um, even though they work together, they don't always communicate internally, so I'm imagining we'll get some kind of, um, kind of canned comments, I'm assuming, about some of the access points on Highway twelve primarily. But, um, outside of that, um, you know, I don't expect that we're going to have much more in the way of comments, and I haven't.
Will, will they meet the deadline?
Well, so, our deadline is, is technically July first, um, but it, it's actually a year from then that we have to submit the plan in reality. So, we're still within our window of submitting. They had until, what data?
I think we tried asking for the county may.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
And so we didn't get those comments from them yet, but I did reach back out to everybody who had not commented and said, hey, last chance. They are the only ones who responded, um, with comments, and then I did talk to Dusty. He does have some comments, but I think it's primarily about the access on to County Road nineteen. And so, I haven't seen those though, that was a couple of weeks ago, he said he was going to give me something, so.
Okay.
They're going to be nominal comments or, or minor, right? They're not going to be substantial or, um, comments that make us do much other than maybe tweak some language in the, in the text. The stormwater comments, um, are being worked through with our engineer right now, so he's addressing those comments in the plan. So I do anticipate that we'll have some revisions to the plan based on his, um, response to those comments.
Okay.
Outside of that, um, this plan, you know, the, the primary, um, differences in this plan is that we rearranged some of the land use, um, from the last go-around. And, you know, it's a thirty-year plan, or it's a twenty-year plan, but it's in ten-year increments, so we don't really try to project beyond ten years very efficiently, um, or very accurately, I should say, because we know we're going to get redo it again in ten years. Um, and so you try to focus on what's your ten-year horizon look like, and then, okay, best guess of twenty-year, and, and try to do that. This plan, again, because we didn't have so, uh, very many changes from twenty, twenty to twenty thirty, um, from the twenty twenty, or twenty thirty to twenty forty, I should say, um, this plan's very similar to what we had previously looked at in the city, uh, ten years ago. Uh, our forecasts are not that much different, um, than where they were, and so, um, you know, land areas and things of that nature that are going to change, uh, over the course of the next, uh, twenty years, I mean, it's fairly limited, right? You're talking a couple hundred people, you're talking primarily in redevelopment, uh, developments, redevelopment developments in the city, primarily in the gateway, and the downtown mixed-use, and the Bud Avenue mixed-use. So we anticipate that through those three areas, we'd likely see redevelopment to multifamily from commercial, retail, industrial, office, whatever it is, and will realize then our, uh, two-hundred-and-ten additional, uh, households by tho, by, by those redevelopments. We've got a hundred and thirty-eight coming in right now in the, um, gateway redevelopment, potentially units, I guess. I don't know how they're going to count, they don't count those exactly one-for-one households, but, um, and then in the downtown building, if that were to redevelop into what they're proposing, you're at about forty additional units. So you can see, just in a couple developments, we could pretty easily pick up almost two-hundred units, um, which takes us out to our twenty-thirty forecast, um, actually a little beyond our twenty-thirty forecast, almost to the twenty-forties. So, you know, that's our best guess, but we've sat on some developments for ten years since the last plan that people thought were going to happen within that ten-year per period, and so, um, it, you know, we're, we're trying to make the best estimate we can, so. The, the only, um, real relevant changes then that we made were, we cleaned up on the land use plan a couple of areas. And I'll try to go to those, this is, uh, it's going really slow. Okay, you think that'll go faster? Alright, that's a good call.
How much which?
Land use plan. Alright, I'm going to go there as quickly as I can. I had, um, well, I could just pull up the land use plan, but I thought I'd just keep the whole plan up.
You're already, yeah.
I haven't gotten to the plan.
Oh, the map.
Yeah, I just want to highlight that, that's, uh. Unless you guys want to talk about solar potential, I'm happy to talk about that.
Oh.
You want to go through it?
You, you are, you're already in the transition.
Alright, so I, so it's eight, six, seven, six, it's right at the end, right?
I thought it was.
It's right, it's got to be right here, ready? Is it just not popping up? Alright, I'll get a better way. Pull up the, uh, figures? Yeah. Alright. Trying to go through the plan, but it's not. So thi, this map represents almost everything that we talked about with the comprehensive plan. It, it's illustrative, I think, of a lot of what, um, a lot of what we say is happening in the comprehensive plan, so, um, I'm going to turn on. So, the notice, the notable areas in the plan, um, that we changed from the last go-around, I, I talked about these before.
You can use this one.
Is it work? There you go. So, this area along County Road nineteen here, um, south of the railroad tracks on the east side of County Road nineteen, that area was designated in the last comprehensive land use plan as Office Park.
Yep.
And Office Park, we've learned, is not a marketable land use designation, um, and it, it was fairly restrictive in what it permitted for land use. We think that the mixed-use districts that we implemented in the last go-around, um, with the downtown district, the gateway district, and the Bud Avenue district have a, have a ton of flexibility built into them and offer the community, I think, a lot more, um, ability to respond to market trends, to, you know, different types of development and, and take advantage of things. And so with that in spirit, we said, let's re-guide this to mixed-use downtown and kind of integrate the downtown dis, or expand the downtown district, but, but integrate that whole area, so when you're coming into downtown, it's going to be, from a land use standpoint, similar, and, um, it would also then, hopefully, in character and, and in terms of uses, would be complementary. So that was one of the biggest shifts that we made. The next biggest shift is we took away from this land use area here, the designation of, um, uh, what do we call that?
Like the two A?
Yeah, two A, residential two A, which allowed for the potential for these properties in here to split and/or to, uh, yield twin homes essentially. We went through and looked, there are a handful, and when I say a handful, there's probably four or five properties in here, like this one here, this one on the corner here, um, there's maybe one or two others, that realistically could be split, just given their land area, that they had a potential additional spot. And if you look at the rest of that, you look at where the houses are positioned, you look at how they're oriented and, and everything, how they sit, you would have to acquire a home, tear down the home, and then put up a twin home. And I just, I don't see that market as realistic right now.
And I think, looking, or remembering back to when we did that, it was also thinking that if somebody wanted to buy multiple properties.
Right.
And make multifamily or do something like that, but you're right, they would have to tear them down.
Yeah, and just.
And it was also looking at all the things that we've talked about that never happened because of the economy and all, you know, all those kinds of things, and then just the fact that, you know, things don't change.
Right.
Here that much.
So I think, I think realistically, when we came back, we looked at this area that's in between Maine and Independence right here. We looked at this area as having the potential, one, the church is, you know, three of those big lots right there. And then you get into a couple of lots, and then just given the orientation of Highway twelve, its impact potentially on these lots, and then the idea that our park and school is right across the street to the north, we thought this block had, you know, or it's not really a block, but splitting it from there, it had more opportunity for redevelopment potential than any of this and any of this, at this juncture. In ten years, maybe we're talking that mixed-use area here expands to the east, or maybe we start to expand north along County Road nineteen, but I don't see the opportunity there for that, I don't see the potential. And I see a land use conflict, if somebody does want to come in, buy a dilapidated house, and then start putting in rental multifamily, mixed in with pretty traditional single-family homes, I just see a, a potential conflict right now. Maybe ten years, maybe twenty years, that starts to change as, you know, if this whole gateway area starts to redevelop and all these properties on Independence, I'm sorry, on Main Street, whoop, um, if they start to redevelop, um, then I think you could have, um, this area here, I think you could then start to see some pressure to go across, but I don't see it right now. And when I look at all those lots and I was doing the math on the sizes, looking at what the homes are, there's not that many homes that are what I would consider kind of, um, substandard, or, you know, I mean, most of those homes are.
No, not, not along there.
Yeah, so on the north side of Main Street, I think you're, you're getting into a pretty just normal, typical, regular neighborhood, and I don't, I don't see a huge opportunity to, to go in and redevelop that today. I think you'd be stretching. And if you do the economics on it, buying a single-family home for three-hundred-and-some thousand and tear it down and you put up a duplex? You know, you're, you're not, I mean, I don't think the rent supports that, so, at least my map doesn't show it. So I think that's what we kind of came to in here. Let's focus on this gateway redevelopment, let's re-guide this area along County Road nineteen in anticipation that this could redevelop and complement our downtown, and then pretty much everything else is what it was.
Just that cul-de-sac that we called.
Yeah, we, I don't know if you guys ever knew, but there's a cul-de-sac right here that has nice homes on it.
Yeah.
And it was guided for, um, high-density residential, and I'm going, well, who's tearing that down? I mean, you'd have to acquire five nice homes around that cul-de-sac and then tear it down. It just didn't, it was a land use designation, it didn't make sense. I think in somebody's mind, it made sense only because of the proximity to these other high-density buildings, but when, I mean, there is a clear separation.
And then also thinking if it would, if you had gone into the office, or if you had done.
Right.
Some of that kind of stuff, it, it might have, and, uh, ideas back then. I had a question on this.
Yeah.
On this one. Um, when you're looking, well, for one thing, I, it could be me, but these colors don't match these colors in my head, or, and so I think it's an I thing, but, having said that, keep in mind now, bold I's. When you're looking at parks, um, and there's another map in here that did it, where's, um, it, I look and I can see the parks except for the little wee pioneer off of, um, Highway twelve, or is that up here?
Uh, Pioneer, yeah, that's this one.
Is that, is that this one?
Yep.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
Because there is another one, and I'll, I'll grab that later, but, no, I, I think you're right. I mean, you might as well go with what makes, you know, the most commercial sense, so to speak.
Having flexibility in your land use gives the city a leg up when you're talking to developers, when you're talking about redevelopment, you know, you have then a, you have the ability to kind of self-prescribe land use without having to go back to the Metropolitan Council, for one, and/or without really having to reinvent your ordinance, based on just changes in economies, markets, you know, product types. Your mixed-use zoning district gives the city, I think, a really good flexibility to respond to conditions that are current. And that, and that's a good thing. For example, the, um, the Gateway Project, the Elam Homes that came in, in, in a lot of communities, they would have had to have done a conditional use, or they would have had to rezone that property, they would have had to do something. Our ordinance gave us flexibility to do it as a permitted use, and that was a huge draw for us because, uh, Medina, their property across the street, they needed to rezone it. And go through a comp plan amendment. And so that was a major negative to Elam when they were trying to push time to get in sooner than later, so. So it, it does help when you are trying to be competitive, I think, in the market ways with, with developers or with potential opportunities like that, so.
Good.
Um, so that, that plan, I mean, this is, is one of the largest pieces of our plan that, you know, this kind of represents a lot of what we, um, have guided. As it relates to sewer, water, stormwater, those utilities then just simply show that they can support this plan, right? So for the most part, it says, there's certain thresholds that need to be met by rooftops or households, and then that might trigger certain improvements. Our system's, though, pretty set up, so there's not a ton of, of effort that had to be done other than to say, okay, um, if this area here all builds out or redevelops and then makes use, redevelops in this, do we have the capacity, and then what are the trigger points for upgrades to our capacity in sewer and water do that? I don't, I mean, we can go into the technicals, the, the, um, flow, gallons per minute and everything else of, of sewer and water, but that's what that piece of the, the plan does. We're, we're simple because our, we're self-contained, we can't grow outside of that boundary.
Yeah.
So having to project future infrastructure outside, um, to serve growing areas doesn't, there, there is nothing there. And then, um, transportation is, is one that we did, um, make some additional changes on, and, um, let's see if I can pull this figure out. Do we have?
You're looking at the highway.
Yeah. This one.
Yep.
Um, so this is our, our latest and greatest, um, plan for basically the Highway twelve and then the future transportation. So what we are showing in this is, zoom in on that, there you go. Is Bud Street closing north of Main Street, between Highway twelve and Main Street. We show a limited then right-in, right-out access coming out of southbound Bud Avenue. We show this little access to the liquor flower shop deal closing off. We show then a full access at Independence and Maple, and then we show a full potential access at Delano and Highway twelve. Marsh is closed, Spring is closed, and then we show a full access at Pioneer. But the primary focus is going to be the intersection at Main Street and Highway twelve, where we would look at a full-controlled intersection. That is different than our twenty-thirty plan, in that we had options for a couple of intersections to potentially have this. We want to get away from the maybe and say, this is our, this is what our community is looking for in the next twenty-year, um, time period as it relates to transportation on Highway twelve.
So then the Hock would go away, and it would be like the semi-four or?
It would be a semi-four.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's, that's the most realistic type of.
Yeah.
Intersection, because the speeds are already limited and throttled down through, um, you know, downtown here, and so, talking with Hennepin County, talking with Mindot, this is, this is something that they would support.
Okay.
So, and then it also then kind of feeds into our downtown redevelopment plan, where we would close Bud, create a pedestrian, uh, plaza, pedestrian public space, and, um, that's what I was just talking about a little bit earlier with the library potentially partnering with the city on a City Hall library project, and then that library being a redevelopment piece.
On one of these maps, and I didn't mark it, but there was something that made me think in looking at the little symbols and whatever, that it, there would be like a pedestrian overpass?
Oh.
Was that a?
That was on the railroad.
Yeah, the parks and the trails.
Yeah.
Or down first.
It was, so on the trails map, we had long-term.
And I mean, I, I know that it's, people have talked about it, but seeing it in here made me wonder if somebody had said, okay, yeah.
So, so right here at the, at the end of Main Street, there is still a placeholder, I called a placeholder. Um, we talked about whether it made sense to take it out or keep it in, but I don't think there's any reason to take out the, just vision for it. If you ever got funding, if the railroad ever wanted to do something, if the county ever said, hey, we want to make another car. It's in your plan, so you could use that realistically, is it a, is it a twenty-year? I, I mean, it's, that's a really expensive, you know, bridge. Um, and the county, the county in Three Rivers wants to make a, you know, full bikeway on nineteen, you know, that's part of their regional system, so. They would then improve the crossing here to be a full pedestrian level, you know, safe crossing with the right, you know, arms and. So, I, I mean, getting this, but we said, why not? Why, why would we take it out? I think it shows that we think there's another, you know, a need to, to create that connection between the community, so.
Okay.
Definitely not a top priority.
Yeah.
Well, and I.
The boardwalk.
Like I said.
This is, this is, I think, a little better than the boardwalk.
A little closer.
A little closer than the boardwalk. Boardwalk's circling.
It was just one of those things where I thought, hmm, so, well, no, and I, I, again, why not?
Dream big.
Yeah. I mean, like, who but us ever reads these things?
Nobody.
I know that.
Me.
Which is why we're, you know, it's like, all these people going through and doing this every ten years for thirty-year plans is.
You know.
The Met Council has to do something to keep them in business.
They do.
Yeah.
They do. Now, fortunately for you, they paid for the, uh, piece of most of the plan, which is good, so.
Yes.
They, they kind of are self-fulfilling on that.
I'll, I'll give you, I'll give you that.
Not every community.
Grudgingly.
Gets money from the Met Council to do the plan, so. But you're right, this, I mean, this plan, you know, and Maple Plan's unique, we're, we're totally isolate, or totally borderlocked, landlocked, so we're somewhat unique in that, um, you know, and, and our area is fairly small, so we don't have the, this just huge, big land use area to, to guide and drive into, but, um. So your plan's going to be repetitive, every ten years, you're going to go, boy, didn't we talk about this before? But it does allow you to respond to some of the market changes you've seen, and, and, you know, that Office Park was one that I think made sense ten years ago, and in the last ten years, people have said, what the heck is this? And we've tried to talk to people about actually applying the land use provisions on properties in there, and it's like, this just doesn't make sense, and it, and most of the people asking for what they could do with that had no interest in Office Park. It just wa, it's just not, uh, i- it's probably no longer relevant, so, you know, being able to kind of re-check these and then say, okay, let's make that tweak, makes sense, so.
Okay. I had a, a couple of questions or, like, things, um, well, some of this wasn't numbered, but it's where it starts figure dat, X dash X, complete plan goals, that's at the top of the page.
Of this one, of.
Oh, is it, um, in the first chapter or the left?
Let's see. It, it would be at the beginning, it's right after the I-X.
Oh, our first goals.
Yeah, X, yeah.
Yep.
And, um, this is just more like, what's the word I'm looking for? Esoteric or whatever.
Sure.
Yeah.
Under four and five, uh, four, where you talk about parks, trails, and office space.
Yeah.
The middle bullet.
Okay. I'm, I'm, I'll be there in two seconds.
That's okay.
Page twenty-five of the packet, if that helps.
The, yeah, I just want to see, because I, we've updated some even from the time of the packet.
Okay.
Isn't it right in front of you?
Yep, it should be.
You know, I, I wonder if it, this is.
And great on the pictures, by updating the pictures, by the way.
Lovely. Yeah, Caitlin took a lot of those that I used on the front.
I just, you know, see something, just.
Are you, uh, goals chart?
I know, but I, it's not showing up in the text version in a Marin Y, so I just want to see if I can pull up the PDA. But.
Can you do a search on words like query, query figure X dash X?
So, I think this is it, so.
It is, that is it.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, so, on, on four, in the middle bullet, provide the community with a variety of affordable choices for physical activity and recreational opportunities for people of all ages. And this is, this is one of those things where in, in the politically correct world, and also to be inclusive.
Sure.
Is there a reason why people of all ages and ability, and abilities or abilities is not a part of this?
No, no, I think that's a good point.
And, and it's, um, I mean, I, I know that there's. And, and it's, um, I mean, I, I know that there's always going to be something. Not everybody, you know, everything isn't even wheelchair accessible. It shouldn't be, all those kinds of things. But it's also keeping in mind, is this something that somebody would look at and say, well, what about people who are physically challenged?
Sure, sure.
What are you, what are you doing?
Yeah, we could just say, uh, recreational opportunities for people of all ages and abilities.
Yeah, I think that's a good point.
Yeah, yeah. We'll just add and abilities to the next to ages.
And then the water supply plan on the first bullet.
I think, is that the one that was duplicated?
No.
Oh.
I got, I got rid of those.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. And you were going to keep the one, the first one that said, um, provide water service inefficient and orderly, blah, 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 with low cost. Now, this one, considering the water, all, how much things cost for services, not just our community, but all over, they're not low costs.
Right.
I mean, maybe we're low compared to who, but is, is it something, and this is, this is a me thing, so.
Yeah.
This doesn't have to be, but it, are you looking more for something that is competitive costs? Or you're looking for something that is reasonable or, because to say to someone who's, um, I, I hear a, a lot from people who say, you know, every quarter we're paying.
Our water bill is high.
Our water bill is higher this year or this, this time, it's, you know, now instead of like a hundred and fifty dollars, I'm paying two hundred dollars and then the next time.
Yeah.
So, it's, it's just one of those things where that one might get somebody's question. Hi, Barbara.
I think, um, kind of more.
And, and it's, it's a hard thing to quantify.
Yeah, I think the idea was just, you know, it's kind of more like the ideal. Like, is it, is it, is it, you know, the reality, but our goal, you know, the goal is to provide it as at, at the lowest cost possible, you know?
Right.
So.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's.
But I think, yeah, maybe, maybe there's a better terminology.
But we can maybe term it better?
Maybe it's not low cost, maybe it's.
Like efficiently or?
Because when I, when I hear the word low.
Yeah.
I go, okay, I, I understand what low is. I also understand why we're being charged what we're charged. And I'm actually in agreement with it. I think that for way too many years, Maple Plain ignored those kinds of things.
Absolutely.
Just completely.
Yeah.
And so, and I know that we're not as high as some other places. I know that Long Lake put everything on moratorium so that they could go back because it was, people were just like fierce. But anyway, that, that'll get you something. And then on the one that says service, surface water.
Yep.
The second bullet. In here, it says through Wetland Conservation Act, buff standards? Okay.
For future generation through Wetland Conservation Act. I think it's buffer.
Buffer.
Okay, buffer. And the only reason is my brain went to buff. I'm sorry. And, and so, I thought it was buffer, but, you know, if you're using abbreviations for things, maybe put that in the dictionary over here, okay?
Yep.
Yeah, I need to, I need to typo to be honest.
I think, yeah, I think they meant buffer.
And then, just out of curiosity, when we were talking about the purpose of the comprehensive plan.
Yeah.
Going through all of that.
Yeah.
And on page X of that, it talks about community history. And we were originally settled in eighteen fifty-four, but on everything, it says established eighteen sixty-eight. And so.
I think it's ori, maybe originally settled versus established might be two different things.
And, and I, I, I understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
But it's, so then what we have is settled, established and incorporated.
Right.
Okay, all right, just curiosity.
You know, but in community history, it might be, it might not be bad to just say that.
You know, you could say it was established. Use, use the word that we all use, that it was established.
Yep.
I mean, that's fourteen years difference.
Right. First settled versus, uh, established and incorporated would be the.
And a lot of Minnesota was in the eighteen fifties, eighteen sixties that people came in, including my family.
Okay.
And then, um, one of the things, and it was, I, I saw it in the, the notes too here. This is just more of a comment, you know, in the back when they did the surveys and stuff.
Yeah.
And in the land use goals, policies, implementation summary, and we, they talked through the times, where we're, we're talking about, um, existing housing stock and maintaining it in a safe and aesthetically pleasing manner. There's the goal and, um, and in my, I, I have this thing about, um, and I know that, what this is for, but there are things that, um, are not aesthetically pleasing in terms of people's homes. In, in, including in my neighborhood.
Right.
I look at several of them every single day. And, um, I understand about people being able to, to financially do things or not do things. And so, it's, it's also one of those things where somewhere in all of this, um, there's the, here's what we aspire to and want, but how are we helping people to really do it?
Sure.
Kind of thing was, that's.
Okay, so you don't, the, the, we'll just, we'll just.
I mean, leave it as it is. It's just, it, it's, when people say, well, we have, because there's even a place in here where it talks about the housing stock isn't that old, so there isn't the need for a lot of upkeep.
Sure.
Well, my house is, is sixty, sixty-seven years old.
Right.
Um, I got to tell you, before I did all the stuff that I did, it needed a whole lot of stuff.
Sure.
And so, you know, when you look at something and you say in town that the housing stock is, is okay and that we want people to come in, but there are literally, there's at least two houses in my neighborhood that I would wonder if not sometime in the near future, that they aren't going to just kind of go whoop.
Sure.
And fall down. So, it's like, so it, you know, and, and it was commented by people in here too that, you know, this, the housing stock.
Yeah, I think it's, some of it's a combination of, you know, right, the daily maintenance that people aren't, you know, you know, stuff, a lot of the comments in there was like, oh, people have this and this junk in their yard. And so, a lot of it, I guess, maybe what we were getting at is that some of it wasn't about like that house itself, but more.
The people.
The yardy.
The yard and the.
Upkeep.
The upkeep, you know, that kind of daily, kind of, yeah.
And, and that always comes down to, I mean, you know, how do you motivate people?
That's a tough one.
I know, I know it is. And I.
Well, a lot of communities develop programs for like housing stock renovation. They, they do grants. You know, there's programs out there through, like Livable Communities does some, um, Hennessy County E D A or C D A, whatever, they would probably have some programs, but you'd have to start to implement those.
Right.
But there are opportunities for that. But I think it's a, I think it's a good point. Yeah, I think ten years ago, it was ten years younger.
Well, yeah.
Many people were still like, well, and I mean, I think, I think relatively speaking, our housing stock is young comparatively to a lot of communities' housing stock, but it's still, still could use upkeep. I mean, it's a.
Well, and, and it comes down to, I mean, we've talked about this before and it comes down to things like, um, you know, how do you, what's the word? It's not the right word, but incentivize, incentivize people to, um, you know, the, the person that's.
Southward.
Yeah, on the other side of like the Yukona building and that house. I was a part of, you know, saying, okay, yeah, you can build your big pole barn because you're going to put all your crap inside of it. Oh, you know, dear God in heaven, you know, the tree with the funny stuffed animals that are all bedraggled is still there and dead. And so, it's going to fall on somebody someday. And he's got all of his stuff, including a porta potty, for crying out loud, in his backyard now. So, it's like, what do you do? What do you say? How many times do you report? And, and I, everyone's entitled to, to as much as possible be able to do what they want on their property. But the other part of it in my head is you're living in town. You're next door to somebody. You're not on ten acres where nobody's going to see what you look like.
Right.
And that you got a biffy in the backyard and you're on top of everything else. But anyway, okay.
No, that's a, that's a struggle for us. Um, you know, it seems like, uh, the law's not always on the city side in terms of that.
Right.
So.
Um, on the map, um, natural resources?
Yeah.
That says, it's figure two-four. Um, just out of curiosity, up here, we've got Discovery Center, which is a school. But next door, all the other parks are named. Why isn't Vet, Veterans Memorial, blah, blah, blah?
That must have been a.
Or, I'm, whatever, what, I'm sorry, I forgot what it's called.
Veterans Memorial Park.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll get Dan to add that back in.
Maybe we didn't have the name locked down at that time?
Yeah, there was a lot. There was a transition.
There's a little bit of a debate on that name.
There was a transition period, so.
All right, let's keep touch.
And then, this is a teeny thing and you know how I am, and I was looking for substance, Nicole. I was. This is just, came out on page three-two and three-three. Some of this over here is bold and some isn't.
Okay.
And on almost every other thing, it's not bolded.
Okay.
So, it's, it's like.
Unbold that.
Yeah, just how it looks. Because isn't that what this is all about, how it looks?
I, it gotta look nice.
And then.
I think it was three, that was the, the table three, right?
Hold on.
For chapter three?
Yep.
We're at the top. It says figure three dash one.
Okay, yep, that's the goals chapter or, or the goals one for the.
And then, oops.
Go ahead, that's fine.
Okay, I will, um, I've already confessed that I haven't read every single word of this. Um, but I kind of was going through and this caught my eye, which tells you how weird I am. On page six dash one, two, in wastewater.
Yeah.
It's, it says Maple Plain District Five. I finally found out which district I'm in. I thought that was very interesting. But anyway, it says Maple Plain District Five is, has the eighteen-inch trunk sewer.
Okay.
So, I think it's just has?
Yep. So, what, what is that?
Page six dash twelve, and it's under Maple Plain District Five, and then in parentheses, the M P dash five.
Okay. Yep, that's just a.
And, you know, somebody's going to figure it out, but.
No, it's good to have some more eyes. Sometimes my eyes just glaze looking at this too many times.
And then, so I would think.
You do what I do, except I, um, do the search and I always put asterisks, asterisks, like a whole bunch of them by what I do. There's a yellow appendix G highlighted on page six fourteen.
Okay.
That doesn't have one of your wonderful little notes.
Yeah, I think we, I think that, I think I've gotten all the highlights now, but yeah.
And then this is just a question for my neighborhood.
Okay.
The storm sewer system made me think of this, this map.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay. With all the water we've had, there's, I always refer to it, the moat around my house, you know, like the ditch fills up in the front, which it should because that's where water's supposed to go.
Yep.
And then on, between properties, I always know where it's going to go. And then one part of mine, then if you, you know where I live.
Yep.
On Howren, okay, the house just immediately to my north. And then.
All behind you.
Yeah, so the four houses that are, you know, on both sides.
Yep.
There, where they meet, where those four meet, was so, so underwater this year.
Really?
Like, so underwater.
Yeah.
That the guy who has raised his little wee hut thing. You know, his mansion, I don't know how he could possibly raise it anymore. It's, it's like, almost silly.
A tree house?
Yeah, it's almost a tree house. Somebody told me, and I haven't walked through there, but someone told me that there's a drain back there.
Okay.
Now, if there is, is that something that the homeowners have to figure out how to clear or is that a city thing? Because it, honest to God, it, it was, well, it's funny and it's kind of sad in a, in a certain way. One of the people, because the winter was kind of nice, and so they had walked all their yard furniture down there. And then there was so much water and it all froze. And so, all the furniture was frozen in there. So, that part's sad.
Sure.
But, um, you have to find entertainment where you can.
I like it. I like it.
How, if there is a drain there.
Who's responsible for it?
Is it, is it the, can the city help? Is it something, I mean, how on earth would a homeowner?
Depends whose drain it is.
Uh, yeah.
So, somebody could have put in a private drain system with like just some landscape drain tile or something like that. But if it's a bigger structure, that's a part of the stormwater plan.
And, and see, I don't, I don't know.
Then it would be a city's infrastructure.
Okay.
Yeah, we could, uh.
So, if I, if, if I, well, I don't know, happened to go walking.
Actually, all you'd have to do is just tell us and we'll look at it. And I, we have a map. We, we have a map that tells us.
And, and I don't know. People have told me that there's a drain. And so, in my head, I'm picturing, you know, like the great, a drain kind of thing. And then somebody who had lived in one of those houses said, well, we asked one time. I have no idea who they asked. At all. I don't, I don't know if they asked here or another neighbor and like, who can help us with this? And it was kind of like, you're on your own.
Yeah, and it's possible that somebody put in a private or they, a couple of homeowners got together, put in a little tile system. But I don't know where would outlet. You'd have to outlet it somewhere.
Yeah, and, and I don't know the answer to that.
They would have tapped into something. We can.
I would say I can have, tell Bobby and have him follow up on that.
Yeah, because the house right next to me is, um, fifteen hundred Howren.
So, you and fifteen hundred and then?
Well, it, not me. So, the fifteen hundred and then the little house next north of it.
Yep.
And then the two that are behind it. There's a yellow house and then it's a, a, what do you call it? A, um.
It's a duplex.
Duplex, thank you. It's a duplex.
Okay.
So, those four properties, it's literally like how those four meet.
Okay.
But it's fifteen hundred and then the one north of it in there.
Okay.
And it, it was beyond silly this year.
Okay. Yeah, we can try and see who that, the stream that is.
Yeah, we can look. We have, we have some records. I don't know, if it doesn't show up on our stormwater map, then maybe a private.
Then, then it becomes, then it is a private thing. But it, it also, you know, if it was something that, you know.
And if it is a private thing, how long ago was it created and are those four people still the same four people there?
Um, the answer to are they the same four people? No.
Okay.
They're not. They're all, all different owners.
Don't have who?
And, um, yeah, all, all different owners, even from when I moved here twenty years ago, so. But, so, but that was all I had. Questions? Did anybody else have any questions?
I didn't get all the way through.
Oh, I, I didn't expect it. A lot of it was, yeah, just, yeah, just looking at some final, final thoughts and final comments.
Yeah, and if there's any, I mean, if there's any, like, that you do put together, this is going to go to council in two weeks, three weeks, three weeks.
End of June.
So, we've got a couple of weeks where we're going to be like kind of pouring over some of the edit, um, and trying to get it into kind of a finalized state. Even after council adopts it, it gets submitted to Met Council. They're going to make comments. We're going to be revising it.
We got time.
Anyway, based on their comments. I haven't gotten any clean reviews yet, which is not likely from Met Council. So, ten years ago, I got one and they told me I was the only one that got a clean review on one plan submitted, but it was only out of, out of three, estimated, I got one. So, um, it's unlikely, but they're, they're really cracking down on, they're, they're hot on affordable housing.
Yeah.
And they're hot on inflow and infiltration, which is going to affect my plan. They're going to, they're going to probably make quite a bit of comment on our plan, but.
Well, and, and, you know, you look at, and I, this is an editorial comment, I'll admit it. You know, you look at how, you know. how, you know, the, they are about that kind of stuff. Their house isn't that clean.
No.
And, so.
No, it's, it, it's that, we struggle, right?
I know, yeah.
I mean, we struggle with the Met Council.
Yeah.
We don't make many.
Yeah, we, we try, we try.
Try not to.
But there is a, there is a, such a huge organization at this point, they have so much.
Yeah.
Authority.
It grows bigger and bigger and it gets sillier and sillier.
It does. It gets sillier and sillier, and I always fight the, all my communities I represent, for the most part, are outlying communities and I've fought the, hey, we're not Minneapolis and St. Paul, we're not even Richfield and Bloomington, Maple Grove and Plymouth. Let us be different, right? We're not all the same. It's okay. The, the whole place, the whole state of Minnesota doesn't need to look like the same subdivision.
Yeah.
And they're like, nope, it's gotta all be the same. That just makes sense to us. And so I fight that battle, you know, like, all the time with them, so.
Well, I, you know, I think it's, I, I mean, it's something that we have to do. It's, it, I think, done well. And, um, and, and so, um, you know, I obviously, you know, recommend, cause I, I don't want them mad at us either. When I worked both at the city and at the DOT, I mean, I worked with people at the Met Council and some of them are lovely. Not many, but, um, you know, it's, it's just, it's like one of those things where, hello, could we be more bizarre? Yes, it's possible. So, but I, you know, I think it's a good one. Do you, we don't, do, do we recommend that y'all go again?
So we hold a public hearing and we recommend a city council to, uh,
Adopted?
To, to adopt the comp plan and, and submit it subject to metropolitan council, so we'll need a motion that just is, motion to recommend approval of the comprehensive plan. So it's just approval, actually, just recommend approval, subject to metropolitan council, um, comments.
Comments. I need a motion.
And then the council adopt a resolution to that effect.
Recommend a motion.
And we'll, we'll.
We'll make a motion to recommend.
To recommend.
Okay.
A nice second.
All right.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Yep.
Metropolitan Council review and approval.
Yep. Thank you for putting all this together. I love the little maps. I liked finding out what district I'm in.
It's fun.
Fun stuff.
Uh, it's good. Yeah, we're getting close, we're getting close. There, there's still, you know, like, every time we go through, we keep finding like a figure that's misnumbered or a map that still has XX on it for some reason.
We'll just need a motion to adjourn unless there's anything else.
Oh, that's right, that's right. Okay.
I make a motion to adjourn this wonderful evening.
It is really nice.
It is.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nicole wants to go home. She's out. See you guys.
Thank you for.